Okay, good morning, everyone. I call the county commissioners' meeting of April 29th to order. Today, we have two distinguished fellow elected officials, Dan Burns, clerk of courts, marine veteran, and Brian Tate, register wills, who will lead us in the pledge followed by the invocation. So, Dan?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a word of prayer. God, our peace and our strength, we pray for our nation and the world as we face continued uncertainties around coronavirus. Protect the most vulnerable among us, especially all who are currently sick or in isolation. Grant wisdom, patience, and clarity to healthcare workers, especially as their work caring for others puts them at great risk. Guide us as we consider how to best prepare and respond in our families, workplaces, and communities. Guide our leaders, the president and congress, the governor and general assembly, our county commissioners and row officers, our school directors and municipal officials, to thoughtfully provide for our neighbors while working together to smartly navigate the process for reopening economically and socially. Give us courage to face these days, not with fear and anxiousness, but with compassion, concern, and acts of service, trusting that you abide with us always. We pray these things now in your most holy name. Amen.
First thing up on the docket is a proclamation for Conservation District Week, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Hope to read that.
I'm proud to read this proclamation today. Conservation District Week, May 3rd through the 9th, 2020. Whereas, conservation districts are local units of government established under state law to carry out natural resource management programs. Conservation districts work with landowners and local governments to help them manage and protect land and water resources on private and public lands. Conservation districts were created in Pennsylvania in 1945 in response to the Dust Bowl of the 1930s to improve soil and water conservation. Each county in Pennsylvania has a conservation district except for Philadelphia. Local municipalities rely on conservation district staff to manage earth-moving activities in a way that conserves and protects the local environment. Districts also work with many partners, including government agencies, private organizations, businesses, and others, to accomplish their mission of supporting and helping landowners to conserve natural resources. The districts are each led by a volunteer board of directors with farmers, public members, citizen associate members, and a member of county government. The board identifies local conservation needs, decides which programs and services to offer, and develops a strategic plan. And then, therefore, we, the commissioners of York County, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim May 3rd through the 9th, 2020, as Conservation District Week, commemorating the great work accomplished by PA's 66 conservation districts, given this day in York and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on the 29th day of April in the year of our Lord, 2020, and it's signed by the Board of Commissioners.
And we will see that Mark Kimmel, who leads the conservation district, gets the proclamation. So, thank you.
And I have a couple comments here. I'll just read them. They're actually from Mark Kimmel, who was the district manager, who could not be here this morning because of social distancing and things like that. In 1948, at the request of 500 farmers, the York County Conservation District was formally established by the county commissioners. The mission today still is protecting and improving our natural resources for present and future generations. Soil and water are at the top of the list. Without an abundant clean water supply, we have no life, period. Without sustainable soils and farmers, we have no food. With local citizen volunteer leadership and professional staff, we continue to provide education, planning, technical, and financial assistance as the cornerstones of the York County Conservation District mission. With the support and effort of each of us, we can leave York County better than we found it for present and future generations to enjoy. COVID-19 took away our usual activities, but we all can plant a tree, take a walk, do a trash pickup, or go fishing as we celebrate Conservation District Week, and that's by Mark Kimmel, the district manager.
So, thanks, Mark. Okay, on to item number five.
I make a motion to approve the consent of items A through D as listed below.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the county of York on behalf of the Information and Technology Services Department and Global Data Consultants, LLC, Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, for 10 Microsoft Surface Books and Accessories for a total cost of $18,927.98 under a PA-COStarz contract. This is being funded with a juvenile probation grant.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven.
I make a motion to approve a settlement agreement on behalf of the Human Resources Department for David Luck versus the county of York.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight.
I make a motion to approve a contract renewal between the county of York on behalf of the Human Resources Department and Val Rippeau Benefits Administrators, Grand Rapids, Michigan, to provide processing of non-Medicare-eligible claims as submitted by county retirees currently insured through a supplemental Medicare plan for a total cost of $30 per claim with a monthly minimum fee of $300.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I see Christie's here. Any comments you'd like to make?
No, I can just explain a little bit.
Sure.
A few years back, we moved from our over-65 retiree population from being self-insured to fully insured program, which helped our OPEB calculations for future calculations. When we did that, there were some things that were being paid under the self-insured program that the fully insured program wasn't had under the self-insured program is the same as what they have under the fully insured Medicare program.
And they've had this contract for a number of years?
Yeah, I think we signed it maybe 2017 when we moved over to that program.
Great. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, I mean nine, apologize.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the county of York on behalf of the Office of Emergency Management and the Emergency Services Marketing Corp., Inc., DeWitt, New York, to provide web-based IM responding software for mobile dispatches for the hazmat team, live tracking hazmat calls, and scheduling training for a total cost of $300 for the period of June 29th, 2020 to June 28th, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10.
I make a motion to approve a contract agreement between the county of York on behalf of the Youth Development Center and Columbia County Children and Youth to house Columbia County youth at the Youth Development Center at daily rate of $375.60 for the period of July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11.
I make a motion to authorize the president of the York County Board of Commissioners to sign a professional services agreement with Herbert Rowan &amp; Grubik, Inc., for the design and construction management of the 2020 Bridge Maintenance Program for lump sum fee of $69,400, inclusive of expenses except advertising.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And, Mark, we see this, I think, every year. This is just an ongoing relationship.
Yes, this is a normal contract with the bridge engineer. Basically, what it is, is all the maintenance and repairs that were identified as part of the bridge inspection program last year will be taken care of this year through this contract.
And I think we currently have, what, is it 93 county bridges?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12.
I make a motion to approve the submission and grant application on behalf of the district attorney to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, for the purchase of one 3D laser scanner and peripherals, the purchase of seven recording devices, and payment of one-time connection fee for the office's precious metals database to allow for sharing to criminal justice agencies statewide for a total grant amount of $149,967 for the period of October 1st, 2020 to September 30th, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I believe we have the distinguished Kyle King here with us today. Morning.
Brief explanation of the $149,967 that we are seeking. Again, as mentioned, it would be for the purchase of one 3D laser scanner to replace the existing and outdated, outdated and out-of-service equipment that we purchased approximately 10 years ago. This scanner will increase the capacity of the York County Forensic and Investigative Unit to assist municipal police departments in processing both indoor and outdoor crime scenes. Scene processing will result in digital display exhibits, which will assist in countless investigations and provide evidentiary exhibits to be used in criminal prosecutions. Again, and then, as mentioned in there, the purchase of seven recording devices, and finally, the payment of a one-time connection fee for Cobra Precious Metals Connection through CODI Systems. This connection will allow for data maintained in the York County Precious Metal Pawn Database to be made available to criminal justice agencies statewide through Super Cobra. And just for your edification, and for those who may be watching, the district attorney's office, every district attorney's office is required to maintain a precious metals database. Prior to about two years ago, we made that an online tracking system approximately two years ago. Since the inception of that program, we've brought on two surrounding counties with a third in the pipeline. And so, as you can see, it's allowed for better regional sharing because they come in, they also share in that cost, which saves money for York County. CODI Systems was mentioned in there. CODI Systems is our record management system, not only for the office of the district attorney, but for all, but I believe, two of our municipal police departments and the Pennsylvania State Police. And then, the Cobra system that was mentioned is essentially a bridge that allows us all to data-share and share those reports. So, unless there are any other questions on that, I believe that should answer any potential questions.
It's actually submission of a grant application. Are these competitive grants? Are we, is it given that we would get this money?
This is a competitive grant, but we do certainly feel, unless I missed it, there is no county match to that. So, nice, easy money there if awarded. Anything else?
Good.
Okay, and I will assure you, we have, there's another one. I will likely be coming back in the next week or two. We've been working with helps, and so, we will continue to aggressively seek any kind of grant dollars we see out there that will offset county taxpayer dollars, so.
Appreciate that.
And is it federal dollars, possibly?
Both federal and state. A lot of the state dollars are passed through from.
I make a motion to approve a contract after bid award to Spring Grove Area Ambulance, Spring Grove, Pennsylvania, on behalf of the York County Coroner's Office for the local decedent transport services and for autopsy transport services to Lehigh Valley Hospital. Local transport services are billed at $300 per transport plus load mileage fees of $5 per maux. Autopsy transport services fees are $550 per transport. The contract term commences on May 1st, 2020, and is for one year.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions, concerns, comments?
I know we had this contract last year with Spring Grove, and we went through the RFP process, and I think we had two bidders, and this was the low bidder, and we're just restabilizing them.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14.
Make a motion to review the right of entry on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department to grant permission for the United States of America Department of the Army to enter and exit the Northern Extension Parking Lot for conduit repairs.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 15.
Make a motion to approve the filing of an amended petition with the court to add Saxon and Stump LLC as special legal counsel for representation in intellectual property and patent litigation matters, and the execution of a fee agreement with Saxon and Stump LLC to provide representation to the county of York at no cost to the county, as such costs are being paid by Text Behind, Inc.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
I'd ask Michelle, or sort of maybe to explain this motion.
Yeah, this fee agreement is to be signed by the commissioners, so although there's no, which is a vendor of the county in this matter, and we also have to refile a petition with the court because we keep all of our third-party or outside counsel on a list that is approved by the court. So, there's really two issues here, the signing of the fee agreement by the commissioners, and also the approval to file an amended petition with the court.
So, we entertain a legal firm or something we have to amend a petition with the courts to add them to the list?
Yes, even though we're not paying the fee, I feel that it's best to just have them on the list so that, in, you know, full disclosure, that these are all of the firms that are entitled to work for the county.
And just for the information, Text Behind has a contract with the county of York and the prison for mail services?
Yes, with the prison board.
Right.
Thanks. Any further discussion?
...'s meeting, which provides for the waiving of county real estate tax penalties for the tax year 2020. Such waiver of penalties expires on December 31st, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
And I guess, Mark, maybe you'd like to, I know we had this, you know, on the commissioners' agenda back in early April, and we put it off, and I think we went out and did some review of some townships and boroughs about the tax.
Yes, we contacted all the townships and all the municipalities throughout York County regarding either extending the discount period or waiving the penalty period. We were under the belief that we couldn't extend the discount period because it required state legislature to take action, which they eventually did. However, it was after the governor signed the legislation after the discount period had expired. The majority of the folks have paid at the discount period. To date, we've received about 75% of the real estate tax payments. So, the only option kind of left was to forgive the penalty from June 15th through the end of the year, which is what this resolution would do. We've received word from quite a few of the municipalities that they intend to follow the town, or the county lead and do what the county does, which will solve a lot of confusion for the taxpayers and the tax collectors.
I think the only other thing to add, just so we're clear in our communication, is the percent of the penalty is what is being waived. It will be a 0% penalty, but if you do not pay your taxes by December 31st, then a penalty will be placed on your bill starting January 1st. So, just, I want to make sure we're clear in our communications on what this motion covers.
So, people who have gotten their tax bills, normally, the county is on with the borough or township, and the local municipalities will have to make a decision if they're going to waive the penalty period through December 31st.
Correct.
Or to the end of December. But people paying their county taxes have the ability to wait and not pay till the end of the year and still just pay the face amount.
Correct. And the face amount is reflected on their bill for the county and the municipality. So, if the municipality does not waive the penalty, then they would have to add the face amount of the county bill to the penalty amount of the municipal bill.
Okay. And we'll obviously be going out and notifying the tax collectors and.
Yes, the legislation requires that we notify the tax collectors within 30 days, which I believe is May 20th. So, we'll send out the notification right after this meeting to both municipalities so that they're aware of what we're doing, and to the tax collectors.
Okay.
And the county will also use some other networks that we have in the community to get that message out. For example, REAC, the Realtors Association of York and Adams County, we'll be communicating with them and putting it on our website. So, we will be using other forms of communication to kind of spread the word there. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 17.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2020-13 authorizing Barry O'Meyer, director of the Public Works Department, Joshua P. Deweese, Assistant Superintendent of the Parks and Rec Department, and Michael E. Hoobes, director of the Parks and Rec Department, to register with the Department of Environmental Protection E-Permitting System to be an electronic filing administrator on behalf of York County.
Our second motion.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 18.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2020-14 on behalf of the Community Development Department of York County Planning Commission to approve the following changes to activities approved under the York County 2019 Action Plan and funded through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Washington, DC, Community Development Block Grant Program.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 19.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2020-15 on behalf of the Community Development Department of the York County Planning Commission, authorizing the following change to the 2019 Annual Action Plan as amended under the county, excuse me, under the York County Community Development Block Grant Program funded by U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Washington, DC.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 20.
Motion to suspend policy GI-17.1 pandemic COVID-19 work operation modifications. Such policy was initially in effect until April 3rd, 2020, and then extended until April 10th, 2020.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 21.
Motion to amend the minutes of the public meeting of March 18th, 2020 to include ratification of the Declaration of Emergency Relief, which was adopted by the commissioners at a meeting on March 16th, 2020.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Just to clarify for the public, if you recall, the Board of Commissioners declared a countywide emergency via press conference on March 16th. Following Wednesday, March 18th, we ratified that agreement at a commissioners' meeting. We noticed that the meeting minutes did not appropriately reflect that. So, all this motion is, is that that will be appropriately reflected on the March 18th meeting minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 22.
Motion to approve the tax refund register 2020-06, authorizing payment of York County real estate tax refunds totaling $16,470.94.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 23.
Motion to approve the check register for the week of April 22nd, 2020 totaling $8,256,125.50.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 24.
Motion to approve the check register for the week of April 29th, 2020 totaling $9,941,676.29.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 25. There were no executive sessions between our last two commissioners' meeting. So, on to other business. We do have a couple things to share today. One, again, just to clarify, the declaration of emergency that the Board of Commissioners put in place on March 16th does not have an end date at this juncture, so the county continues to operate under that declaration of emergency. The county still continues to be closed to the public, but being closed to the public and having a countywide emergency declaration, the two won't necessarily go hand in hand. At some point, when York County meets the requirements set forth by the state and the governor's office on moving from red to yellow to green, the county certainly will consider opening up limited access to the public, even though the county still may be under the emergency declaration. So, just wanted to make sure we were clear in our communications regarding being open to the public and the county being under an emergency declaration. Today, we have Wade Gobrek from the Planning Commission to share with us. I was really excited. I read this week that the Planning Commission developed a York County recreational viewer for folks to be able to view parks and recreation facilities that are continuing to be open during this COVID pandemic. So, Wade's gonna just give us a little tutorial on how the viewer works, and the Planning Commission has also created some fantastic links. So, for those of you who may not be familiar with those, Wade's gonna take a few minutes and share those with you as well. So, can we dim the lights a little bit?
Okay, good morning. Thank you. As she said, my name is Wade Gobrek with the York County Planning Commission. I will give an overview of the recreational map viewer that we created, as well as some other, I'll mention some other mapping applications that we think will be helpful to the residents. We're really excited about this new one, especially during this time. We think it's an exciting tool. And I'd just like to mention a big thank you to Joe Samora on our staff for pulling this together. He's been working on it and was able to make some nice last-minute changes for today's presentation. So, I'll start with how to access it. We can access this viewer. We're sending it out through several of the county's social media tools, and it will also be on some of our websites. I'm going to show the York County Planning Commission's website, which is www.ycpc.org. That's y-c-p-c.org. This is our homepage here, and if you scroll down to the bottom, we have a couple of quick links, and the one right in the middle is the mapping and data tool. Once we open that up, that will take us to our York County map portal. This shows all the mapping applications that are available for the county using local county data, as well as some other federal and state data resources. To access the York County Recreation Map Viewer, we're gonna click to the right, and it's this application here called York County Recreation. When you first open up the application, it will show the county, and it will also show a splash page. The splash page gives you a quick overview of the tool, and in the highlighted text here, just something to mention during this time, even though most of the parks remain open, some of the facilities, such as bathroom facilities and other park facilities, might be, remain closed. And also, as the weather gets warmer, the parking lots are becoming more full. So, please just keep in mind that social distancing guidelines are still in effect, and use those when you decide whether or not to use the public recreation opportunity. On the splash page, we do have some quick links to the CDC and the Pets of Aid Department of Health for the social distancing guidelines. When you open up the tool, you can see York County. There's also an information dialogue box that opens up to explain what these different tools and icons mean throughout the application, so you can quickly look through that to familiarize yourself with what's in the tool. Again, we see the countywide map. I'm gonna start here in the upper right. We have a legend. You can open that legend up, and there's a lot of different colors showing on the map. This will show you what each of those colors mean. On the map, we have included some of the important. On the map, we have included some of the important trails throughout the county, the Herdage Rail Trail, the Mason-Dixon Trail, the areas of the Hanover Trolley Trail that are open and available to the public, as well as a lot of the public municipal parks. We have county parks, and then state parks as well that are open, as well as some other opportunities from nonprofit conservancies. We're gonna close this and go to the layers list. On the layers list, by default, all of the map layers are turned on except one. Here's where you can turn on and off different layers. We also have bike corridors. Again, this includes some of our most popular trails, like the Heritage Rail Trail, Hanover Trolley Trail. But it also shows the state's designated trails that run on some of the roads, like Bike Route SJ or JS, Bike Route S, Bike Route J. If you're driving down the road, you'll see some placards along the side of the road that distinguish these as dedicated bike paths, bike lanes. Also, more locally, we have in the city of York, we have the King Street Shared Bike Lane, Broad Street Greenway, and some other trails. So if you're into riding bikes, this might be something to check out. If we start over here on the left, again, this is information within York County, but we also provide Pennsylvania links. Some of our adjacent counties were bordered by Cumberland, Dauphin County. We have links to their parks and recreation opportunities, especially for the residents living on the fringes of York County, as well as the state parks and game lands, Micho State Forest, Susquehanna Riverlands, Gettysburg National Military Park, just some helpful links found in Pennsylvania that offer additional recreational opportunities. We also, the same for Maryland, the three counties that border us in Maryland, we have links to their parks as well. In the middle, you'll find the social distancing links. You can check out for more information on that. And then right here are the two main tools that we think are gonna be very helpful. We have a recreation locations near me, and you can pull this application up in your computer, your laptop, your tablet, iPad, and it should all have all the functions available. What we can do, I'm gonna type in an address. I'll type in 28 East Market Street, which is the administrative center. And as you type in, it'll give you suggestions. So 28 East Market Street comes up to the top. Right now, there's a slider bar here. We have it set to show all the parks and recreation opportunities within five miles. We can change that. As we change it, the results change. So in and around the administrative center, we have the Rail Trail County Park. We have 16 other parks, and that can be municipal, county, state parks. If we scroll down, I'm just gonna select Gerard Park, and it'll zoom in to that park. You can click on the park, and it'll show you the different opportunities available. So at Gerard Park, we have courts, basketball courts, we have some baseball fields, and a playground. It's a two-acre park, and if you scroll down, we can click on a link, and that will open up additional links. This takes you to the City of York's page to their parks and recreation facilities, so you can get more information as well. Going back, there's an icon here. If you're using your phone and you're out and about, you can click on that. That'll show you your current location and find all the parks within that location. I'm gonna scroll out here and say, "Show me all the parks within four miles." The farthest park, about four miles away is Causler Park in Manchester Township. If I click on that park, that brings up the park, but also shows me there's trails there as well. I can click on the trail, and it will show me some limited information about the trail. It's the medium-length trail. It's asphalt. So if you have maybe somebody in a wheelchair you would like to take out there, this might be a good trail choice for that. And again, you can get the amenities and information for the park. Let me zoom out. If you're at the countywide scale, there's also a tool here. If you wanna just pick a spot anywhere in the county and say, "Show me all the parks around that area," down in the Felton Borough area, again, it'll show you all the parks and recreation opportunities within four miles around that pinpoint. The other tool that we have that's nice is if you don't know the park name, or just wanna see all the parks that offer some kind of certain amenity, show me all the parks that, where can I go fishing? Where are all the fishing opportunities? So we can see all the fishing opportunities. Here's Spring Valley County Park. Fishing is available if you wanna go trout fishing. You can use this tool to find those locations. Also, if you know the park name, but you don't know where it is, we can pick any park we want. Alamooral Park out of the list, and it'll zoom in. And again, you can find the information there that you're looking for. Let me just check my list.
So very detailed. Thank you.
Yes.
Very interactive, too.
Very interactive. The other thing, you can scroll in and out. The other icon I wanted to show is this base map gallery. Right now, it's showing contour maps. You can also show aerial photos, too, once this pops up. So we can show aerials as well. So there's some flexibility, but we tried to keep it simple, easy to use, especially during this time. Make it easy to find those outdoor recreational opportunities, so folks can keep busy. Are there any questions about that, just before I highlight a few others? On our public map portal, just wanted to go over, we have several applications available, but I just wanted to mention a few. We have the York County Property Viewer application, and that one is our most popular. That gives information about all the properties in York County, tax assessment information, tax information, acreage, land use. That's by far our most popular and used every day. We also have the York County GIS Open Data Portal, and residents might not use that as much, but you can go in there and make your own maps. But the consultants and engineers from all over the country will come in. If they're doing a project, working with the local municipality, they can get our county data at no charge. We also have the FEMA Flood Map Viewer. And for those of you that maybe live near a stream or are looking to buy, purchase a house, you can go in here, look up the property, and see if you're in a FEMA national flood map area. If you are, that might determine that you have to pay flood insurance, so it's good to know that information. That's using our local data, as well as FEMA's flood map information that are found on the actual firm maps. Another important tool, especially for this year, is the York County Voting Locations. We worked with the Director of the Voting Registrations. This is a handy tool. It allows you to access, put in your address, go to your property, find out what voting district you're in, as well as where your polling location. I know there's been some changes in, especially West Mannheim Township. There's gone from one to three polling locations. So you could use this to figure out where your polling location is. It also provides directions to your polling location. The other one that I wanted to highlight is the York County Hazard Mitigation Viewer. That ties hand in hand with our county's comprehensive plan, the Hazard Mitigation Plan. And this shows all the hazards that York County is susceptible to, such as flooding, storms, radon, both environmental and man-made. So you can zoom into your property, see what you might be vulnerable to, but it also gives action items and funding resources to help mitigate and fund potential mitigation efforts for the residents and for municipalities as well. So I invite you to visit our York County map portal. There's a lot of information out there, ranging from voting to agricultural easements to parks information, all kinds of stuff, to some heritage information. So I invite you to go out there. I appreciate you giving me the time to present this today. If you have any questions, you can please email or call the York County Planning Commission, and we can walk you through it.
Great. Thanks so much.
Questions from the board?
Nope.
All right. Thank you very much.
No, thank you. We have two updates from our healthcare partners. The first one from UPMC. They wanted to let folks know that they are expanding their COVID-19 testing locations, in particular, to better serve the Hanover community. They will be doing pre-admission testing that will include a COVID-19 test site at UPMC Hanover. And they will also, an outpatient location for symptomatic patients will also be opening in Hanover early in May. UPMC also recently announced that they are working on developing antibody test capabilities. And UPMC and the Hanover Chamber of Commerce are hosting a town hall this Thursday, April 30, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. And then just a quick update from our other healthcare partner, Wellspan. They recently released a COVID-19 information dashboard, and that can be found on their website at www.wellspan.org. The dashboard provides daily updates regarding testing and patient cases across Wellspan within each of the communities it serves. The data, just so we're clear, only reflects Wellspan patients. But should you be a Wellspan patient, it might be interesting to take a peek at that. So that's just a quick update from our friends at Wellspan. We also have an update from the York County Economic Alliance today. Sulie Pinos is with us. So while she's walking up to the podium, I'll give a brief update from elections. And just to remind everyone that the deadline for the mail-in ballot request is due by May 26, so that is fast approaching. We have seen a tremendous increase in the number of mail-in ballot requests. We are well in excess of 23,000 requests for mail-in ballots. During the 2016 presidential primary, we had received a total of 3,000. So the county and the Department of Elections is working rigorously to make sure that we are able to process those more than 20,000 mail-in ballot applications that we're getting. So I see Sulie's up here, so I will turn it over to her.
Great. Thank you all. And thank you for continuing to allow the York County Economic Alliance to share some updates regarding to COVID-19. As I've shared for a couple of weeks now, we can encourage the community and its residents and business owners to continue to go and use preparedyork.com, comprehensive listing of resources related to COVID-19. It's accessible in over 30 languages, and we are continuously updating that website with all of the information as it's being made aware to us. Some of the things that we've shared with you all in previous meetings, the support to small businesses through the DCD loan program that was open a couple of weeks ago and closed quickly, we were made aware of that so far, that 23 loans were awarded for the York County businesses totaling over $1.5 million. So that's direct resources that's coming from the state to businesses here in our county. So I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. As the Prepared York website continues to grow and list resources, we've added a lot of information for employees that have been impacted or displaced throughout this time. Just last Friday, we launched the first virtual job fair with Manpower, York Container, and HR Evolution sharing information for individuals right out of the comfort of their own home on a virtual platform, shared over Facebook with over 3,000 touchpoints and views. A special thank you to the Commissioners for allowing us to promote this and doing a great PSA. That has now just been shared many times throughout the community. That virtual job fair will continue on a weekly basis, so every Friday at 12 o'clock. So in addition to always going to preparedyork.com, always tune in Fridays at 12 o'clock through Zoom and the YCEA Facebook page to view the new virtual job fair. So this Friday, we'll have ES3, Express Employment, and Billit Industries all featured, highlighting the jobs that they have available. Employers can reach out to YCA directly to get scheduled to present through this virtual job fair platform, and we'll continue to share that. The session on Friday was also offered bilingual, and we hope to continue that for the weeks to come. So definitely a lot of great information there. As we're looking towards what does recovery look like in York County, you know, working with the county commissioners and the support, tomorrow at noon, we wanted to let the public and then you all be aware of that there will be a webinar at noon, 12 o'clock tomorrow, with our consultants that we've hired from Fourth Economy, just to give a general data update on what is COVID-19 looking like within York County? What does recovery look like? What are some of the strategies that could be brought into place? Just ongoing awareness of what's going on in our county. So that will be tomorrow at 12 o'clock. That information is available on preparedyork.com, as well as our Facebook page, and just reaching out to anyone from the YCA team, and we're happy to get that information. There is no fee to attend tomorrow's webinar, let alone any of our webinars. Registration is just required so that you're able to access the Zoom link and information. And that just ties into my last point with the ongoing efforts to develop an economic action plan with the city, the County Planning Commission, the Downtown York Business Improvement District. There have been those conversations to develop an economic action plan to strengthen the long-term economic development efforts and the next 10-year plan. So there is another website that has been launched, yorkcountyeap.org. We encourage anyone and everyone to please view that website and fill out a survey that has been launched. Will be available in Spanish as well. But just the ongoing efforts related to the long-term economic development efforts for the county lists a lot of information. There are working sessions that are gonna take place next week, so anyone from the public can fill out that survey and also sign up to be part of any of those working group meetings that are gonna start next week. So just a couple of updates to share, but really can't encourage everyone enough to please use preparedyork.com, now the yorkcountyeap.org, and tune into the virtual job fairs.
Great.
Thank you.
Any questions for Sulie?
I mean, maybe one, but I don't think you can probably answer. But there's been a lot of discussion and people that are unemployed and have filed for unemployment compensation, and the slowness, and I know the state had a kind of antiquated, I guess, computer system and have been updating it, and hired more people. Have you heard much from the public? I mean, are we satisfying their needs and getting, you know, the checks out? Do you have any inside information?
Directly related to the funds being dispersed, not entirely, but we are continuing to be an active response and follow their inquiries through the state, through our contacts. As anyone has asked us for information on unemployment, we have added more information on preparedyork.com related to all of the scenarios with unemployment, as well as the sole contractor, sole proprietorship unemployment application that was opened through the pandemic unemployment assistance process. So we just continue to share that information and relay it to our stakeholders within the state, so.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Just a couple more quick announcements we have. I think as we look at the effects of the COVID-19 crisis, I don't think anybody would question that they've been far-reaching and far-sweeping and really have touched all aspects of our lives. As we continue to put mitigation efforts in place at the county with our healthcare partners, Wellspan and UPMC, we also recognize that we will come out of this, and there will be a recovery process. The county has been launching some recovery efforts. You know, in particular, we've been doing some work with the York County Economic Alliance on how do we recover from an economic standpoint. So there have been some areas of focus regarding recovery that have already been launched. But the Board of Commissioners is going to be formally charging a York County Strong Recovery Task Force. So there'll be more from the Board of Commissioners in the upcoming days regarding that. But we feel very strongly that we really need to formalize a process as we move through and into the recovery phase around management, mitigation, restarting our economy, and ensuring that we have the necessary steps to continue to protect the health and safety of our residents out there. So we just wanted to tee that up for you, but there'll be more to come from the Board of Commissioners on that. Just a reminder for those watching, that Give Local is this Friday, May 1, and you can give right online. So would encourage you to be part of that Give Local activity, even though we can't all get together as a community and participate in that this year. And a reminder that the county will continue to be closed to the public, at least through May 31. And with that, the Board of Commissioners wishes you well and be safe. Thank you. Oh, I need a motion to adjourn officially, I guess.
I'll make a motion during the meeting.
Oh, wait, is there any comments?
Oh, sorry, public comment. Mark, do you have anything on Facebook?
He has.
Got ahead of myself. I apologize. Got ahead of myself there.
William Kearney asked, "What is the YCEA doing to accommodate the sold-out sessions?" I'm assuming he's asking about the virtual job fair.
I can reach out to your pastor.
Okay. Okay, Pastor Kearney, Sulie will reach out to you. Great job Wade going through the application. Thank you to Joe Samora for pushing the recreational viewer application out so quickly. That was Brian Tanya Wall, Patty McCandless, great job Wade and the Planning Commission staff, mapping tools are so helpful, well done. Someone said, "I'm sorry, I am confused. If you are a small business owner, you can go for a walk in a park, but not open your business." Someone asked about teleworking at the prison. Someone asked, "Where are your masks, and are you six feet away?"
We are six feet away.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, Sulie, he was asking about the 10-year, the work group sessions for the 10-year plan, oh, the economic action plan, okay. Yeah, she'll still reach out to you, Pastor Kearney. And Ryan Suppler asking about the minutes being updated. I have some of them to put on the website today. We get them as, so for instance, the last meeting's minutes would have been approved today, so that's why there's a slight delay with that. That's all I have at this point.
So any further public comment? Okay, so I'll just reiterate, the county will continue to be closed to the public through May 31st, and we wish you well and safety, and I'll look for a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, and moving on to Salary Board.
I make a motion to approve the positions, salaries, hours of work, and fringe benefits as provided by existing collective bargaining agreements, as set forth in New York County Ploy Handbook or York County Policy Manual for the following departments and rail officers, with no additional benefits or concessions, unless otherwise noted, as stated in the internal salary board detail. And it's Department 17 Information Services, Department 32 Adult Probation, Department 33 Youth Development Center, Department 39 Prison, Department 57 Public Defender, Department 94 Mosquito Disease Control, and the rail officers, Department 52 Corner, Department 53 Pathonetary, and Department 54 Clerk of Courts.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.